Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to give an invocation this evening? The city attorney, is there any? Alright, let's just hold off on it for now because I'm not sure about that. Yeah. Alright, moving on. Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll? Here. Okay, so starting off, does anybody have any questions? Any of y'all have questions on the consent agenda for the? Unheard? Entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda? All in favor? And is approved? Do we have anybody here? Speak regarding the Prairie Point rezoning? Now the petitioners requested to postpone consideration of their rezoning, but want to see if anybody's here to speak on it? Okay, that's not what I have.
First, we're clarifying the difference between public comment and public hearing. So if they're here to talk about Prairie Point, they would talk during the public hearing, as opposed to during public comment. So that was the point of that conversation. So Amy, do you have any cards for anybody to speak on Prairie Point?
No? Yeah. Alright.
Yeah, we're live, we're live. No, we agree with, we attended the work session. We agree with the amendment to section 205.085, section two, where it will be revised to say in residential lots of one acre or more. That will kind of remove quite a few HOAs. So we don't have to litigate the difference between the R1A and the 10,000. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. And thank everybody else for, you know, Amy and Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Bratton. My husband and I live in Inverness subdivision. An article describing growth-related issues in St. Charles County appeared in today's issue of Mid Rivers News Magazine. Mayor Whitman, along with the leaders of nearby cities, were quoted in the article, and I have thoughts on some of their remarks, which I'm sure doesn't surprise you. For example, Wentzville's mayor claims landowners should be allowed to do whatever they want with their properties, that the voices of 20 or so people who regularly attend city meetings don't really count, and claims zoning or denying development is the equivalent to putting out the unwelcome sign. O'Fallon's mayor says property owners and developers should be accommodated first. Zoning makes it tough, and restrictive policies have the potential to limit development. Call me crazy, but I've yet to see Highway K development limited by anything. Yet the news article remarks I have the most issues with are those made by the Director of Sluice Masters and Sociology Program, who claims St. Charles County is the new Tampa, and retirees are the ones to blame. St. Charles County is the new Tampa because much of Hillsborough, the county where Tampa is located, was developed without any zoning parameters, just like St. Charles County was. My son and his family lived there for many years. I helped them house hunt. And the county's notoriously stringent HOA bylaws now are in direct response to the fact that prior to Disney buying 30,000 acres of Central Florida swampland, Tampa didn't have any zoning regulations. Disney World is 65 miles away. Other developers followed Disney's lead, and the land grab was on. Before Hillsborough's small municipalities even realized what was going on, biker bars, strip clubs, and homeless shelters were built right on top of schools, churches, and neighborhoods. Imagine our son's dismay when sketchy zoning ordinances and variances made way for a huge marijuana-growing facility just beyond the gates of the subdivision where he bought their forever home. The same thing has happened here. Our county's lack of affordable, single-family housing is not because of retirees, but because developers know apartment buildings are cash cows. Just like Tampa in the late 60s, land was cheap here. Before anyone realized it, developers gained the upper hand and started cramming the most people in the smallest spaces possible, thereby creating their own California Gold Rush. Developers are dictating what cities and housing markets look like instead of the other way around. The United States birth rate has steadily dropped since 2009. The boomers who supposedly want apartments, apartment living, will die off. This county and this city will be stuck with unfilled monstrosities. But one way or another, property owners will find a way to keep their money rolling in. I want to thank the board for approving a moratorium on the new high-density construction in Darton Prairie. Thank you.
Make a motion to open the public hearing? There's nobody else? Entertain a motion to open the public hearing? Favor? Ask the petition? Regarding the PD rezoning request?
My name is Jeff Moon with Back to Engineering, here with the developer. We're here to request that this item-
Favor, can you, closer to the microphone? Is, and can you make sure it's turned on, please? I'm not sure.
It's on.
Turn it on, okay. Could you move a little bit closer to it, please? Thank you, sir.
Okay, Jeff Moon, Back to Engineering, for the developer. I'm here tonight to request that this item would be tabled. Good. After meeting with P&amp;Z, getting some suggestions on our site and what we could do on there, maybe they had other ideas of how we could better develop that property. We would like to look at those suggestions and try to come up with a better layout than what we had presented initially. Unfortunately, we couldn't get it done in time to get it to tonight's meeting, so we'd ask if we could postpone this till next month. We'd have time to look at a different layout, maybe help better address the city's concerns.
So as far as protocol goes with this? Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers related to this matter? Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the June 4th meeting. Thank you. Which will be the next regular meeting. All in favor? It was moved by Alderman Wilson, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Okay, motion to close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, well. Ended that, but overall meeting, okay. Alright, so we'll go to new business. Thanks. Sorry, second, long-time listener, second-time caller. So, moving on to the new business. Alright, so can I get the city attorney to read resolution number 394?
Yes, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Darton Prairie urging the City of O'Fallon to authorize funding and installation of a temporary traffic signal at the intersection of Weldon Spring Road and Technology Drive in the interest of public safety during road construction.
Any discussion related to this resolution?
I'm actually gonna let Matt answer that question because I believe he's had conversations, yes?
You what? I'm an arm twister, sure I am. We've talked with O'Fallon, and we can keep urging them. It's still the modot process of short-staffed and all that. It may take a while, but this could help. This could help move the process along a little quicker. Oh, yes, 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 it is happening. Yes. Correct, correct, yep.
Further discussion from the board? I'd like to, you know, thanks Alderman Johnson. I know that's really close to home for you. The only way out of your subdivision, so if you're trying to get anywhere, it's. Oh, I know you are. Yes, it has, yep. It's been a problem. It's, I know Alderman Johnson, Alderman Waters have received many phone calls and concerns, complaints, and same as myself, Kathy and staff. City of O'Fallon put this project forward and gave us. Oh, I'll just, to put it mildly, it was, I was not very pleased with the nature of notification we got or the plan that was in place. It was kind of laid upon us, and a lot of our residents are deeply impacted by it, to the point where it's a safety concern. I have seen no less than three or four accidents personally up there in the times that I've driven through there, and it is a constant problem I've had, and I told this, haven't been here before to the other meetings where we did discuss it thoroughly. I've been cut off many times going through, not speeding or anything, but people get frustrated because they're sitting in line and then they're trying to take risks. And people do speed, people coming home from St. Louis going to Wentzville, there's Highway 70 traffic from the one lane being closed there happening at the same time. So they're getting off at the Highway K exit and trying to take technology to get home faster. So it's just a recipe for disaster. So this is our, this is a standard, this is a way for us to encourage O'Fallon to move rightly on it. And that's why we put this forward, for our city to help bring and highlight this as a concern. And it's a way to help amplify the voices from the residents. Stop us about it. So that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve resolution number 394. Guess we do, so we did, so let me just, so we did the first, we need a first reading, or we just? So we would go to? Alright, so. Right for once, alright. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve resolution number 394. Moved by Alderman Detwiler, seconded by Alderman Johnson. All in favor? Alright. Resolution number 394, does that turn into? Okay, alright, so the next is, we're going to postpone. So I think the discussion on bill number 2524 is to postpone.
Right, the discussion of the, the decision of the board is whether to postpone this bill or read it by title.
So considering this is, just postpone the associated public hearing for it. Yep, thinking. All in favor? Opposed? Heard? Bill 2524 is postponed into the June. All in favor? City Attorney, would you please read bill number 2525 by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Darton Prairie, Missouri approving a final plan for 2.88 acres of a certain property commonly known as the Villas at Darton Place Phase Two, located at the northeast corner of Hanley Road and Fizey Road in the City of Darton Prairie, Missouri.
Does the board have any comments or thoughts it'd like to share on bill 2525?
Planning and zoning approved this, and didn't have any concerns. It's nothing that, no, there were no changes from when they brought forth the plans to us quite a few months ago. So it was just reapproving it as a final, final plan. There were no, there were no changes, and it was, it was approved.
There was discussion about providing for two private property owners to have sewer connections that is addressed, and the owner was willing to work with those and was already working with those property owners in that regard.
Mr. Chairman, there was one other, I guess waiver that they asked for, actually P&amp;Z asked for. And that was the elimination of a sidewalk on one side because it only served one lot. And so they, this one will not have sidewalks. On Fizey? This one's? Oh, this is phase three? Phase two, okay. I just, this, this one's on the northeast corner of Fizey and Hanley. Okay, so I do not. Hanley, yeah, the north-south through. Yeah, yeah, I've been on them. Yeah, there's, there are sidewalks along Fizey and Hanley. I was just talking about the internal road. Yeah, just that internal road serves like nine homes. They had a sidewalk on the north side, they just didn't think that was really necessary.
Any further discussion on this bill? All in favors? Attorney, please, Bill, read bill 2526 by title only for the first time.
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the City of Darton Prairie, Missouri approving a final plan for 4.02 acres of a certain property commonly known as the Villas at Darton Place Phase Three, located at the southwest corner of Hanley Road and Fizey Road in the City of Darton Prairie, Missouri.
Any discussion on bill 2526?
No.
Just to be clear again, no, no changes from the area plan?
No.
No, no variances, no waivers. It's exactly as shown on the approved area plan.
Okay. Alright. Alright, so if there's no further discussion, we will make a motion. By 27 for the first, by title only. Attorney, please read bill 2527 by, I'm sorry, all in favor? City Attorney, please read bill 2527 by title only for the first.
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the City of Darton Prairie, Missouri approving the record plat for 18.14 acres of certain real property commonly known as Commerce Park West, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Right, this is their preliminary and final plat to subdivide or lot-split Commerce Park. P&amp;Z did request that a sidewalk be installed along Hubbell. And the petitioner did ask for two reeds. He requested the board consider two reeds. Alderman Johnson, that was my rationale. There's already one there, and I thought, you know, this would bring it to Weldon Spring, which, as you know, we've got the road grant, which is going to have a 10-foot-wide multipurpose path. And one of the tenants might be an attraction for, you know, younger people. So I thought that sidewalk would be nice. A representative that owns the property consented to putting that sidewalk in, so. No, no, the sidewalks aren't shown on the plat.
It was second reading.
They'll just provide it once they come back and develop that other building.
Any additional comments or thoughts on this from the board?
Yeah, just for the final plat. Yeah, this is admin. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other thoughts on this? Unheard? Okay, entertain a second reading for bill 2528? I'm sorry, bill 2527.
Second.
Mark second by Alderman Detwiler. City Attorney, could you please read bill 2527? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Heard, City Attorney, please read bill 2527 for the second.
An ordinance of the City of Darton Prairie, Missouri approving the record plat for 18.14 acres of certain real property commonly known as Commerce Park West, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Deputy clerk, can you please call the roll?
Aye.
There, bill 2527 passed, and it's 2361. Motion to read bill 2528 by title only for the first time? Well, we've got a couple. Okay, quick discussion before this. There is going to be amendments.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to first reading, and then from there, we gotta, we're gonna amend the operational language, and amend the subsection, and then we're gonna make as amended. But for now, we're just gonna read it for the first time. All in favor? Attorney, please read bill 2528 first time.
Is there? An ordinance of the City of Darton Prairie, Missouri amending section 205.085 of the Municipal Code of the City of Darton Prairie, Missouri by deleting subsection C thereof in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof a new subsection C and providing for the regulation of domesticated animals.
This is a, I think it's probably a good point to, so we've got a couple amendments that we want to work forward, we'll talk about. But many of you that I see in the audience who are not here, work session, so if briefly discuss this for those who weren't here, as far as chickens go. Ordinances within the city. This is going to be R1A, which we're also amending it to be one acre above or only for chicken ownership within the city. R1A by itself is one acre only anyway, and that's kind of where we stood, where we clarified a couple of things, had some discussion, and make it very clear. So in order to own chickens within the City of Darton Prairie, have to have acre of land. And there's some additional, you know, bonuses within ordinance to talk about. You have one acre, you do have chickens, you have five, you have a rooster, and so on. So this should make things a little bit clearer for folks within our city to understand what it's not even really changing anything, it's just clarifying what was already there, trying to clean up some of the language around. Brought to our attention, some of the HOAs and some other residents that there's confusion from the previous year's approval by the state legislature. Chickens, if you have like quarter of an acre of the amount was, but it didn't negate city laws of orient. Our attempt to clean up our own wording and help everybody. That being said, we had, did have a healthy discussion and work session, and from that, that discussion, we identified a couple of different things we're gonna have to go through. And through the private rules of order- And through the, uh, private rules of order, I guess, if how to prove and get things shifted and that way we can move it. We're just talking about, we've got to amend a couple of different errors, though, uh, within that document to make. Apply on our city attorney here to help us waters. Um, so that being said, uh, the first one is the operational language. So if I could. Ask the city attorney to. What is the amended operational thing?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Um, so members of the board, uh, we would be looking for a motion to amend the operative language of section one of bill number twenty-five dash twenty-eight to reflect, uh, that section two oh five point zero eight-five C is the section of the municipal code that is being amended.
Operation.
So if someone already has that chicken coop at this point, will we amend? I didn't know, okay.
I would, uh, if we could hold off on these questions related to the motion that's on the table. Thank you.
All favor? Post? Heard? Ryan. Alderman Wilson? This motion was for Alderman. Detwiler. Okay, alright, so. And it's now.
Correct, so that, that, that is amended.
So the next step is amending a subsection? Subsection?
Correct. Um, and so that, part of all them would be a motion to, uh, as we discussed in the work session, to change that reference to ten thousand square foot, um, to change that from ten thousand square foot to one acre to, uh, be more clear with respect to the operation of the ordinance as written. Um, and so we would take a motion to amend ten thousand square foot and subsection C to one acre.
Motion by Alderman Johnson, second by. Detwiler. All favor? Opposed? Heard? And, alright, so now we move to amend. Prove Bill twenty-five.
Well. You have a.
We don't, we have second reading and go.
And then, yeah, so we can do a second reading, have discussion.
Alright, so Ryan will talk after.
No problem.
Look at your, so next thing we're going to do is. Yeah, this. So there's a motion to read Bill twenty-five, twenty-eight, not as. Not amending. It has amended now? Alright, that's what I. Alright. Second. All favor? Alright, and I think at this point we'll move to discussion.
Okay.
Let me, let me read it first.
Alright, go. Okay.
An ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri amending section two oh five point zero eight-five of the municipal, of the municipal code of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri by deleting subsection C thereof in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof a new subsection C and providing for the regulation of domesticated animals.
Discussion. Thanks, Alderman Wilson.
Mark, you want to say anything else?
Alderman Wilson, you have the floor.
Okay, did you already talk about this?
Yeah, no, go ahead, talk about it. And, and, and it hasn't been discussed in this for me, so I think it's important.
Okay.
So please go ahead.
So if you already have chicken, a chicken coop already, does this mean that their grandfather in, what does this mean? I just want to clarify.
There, if you have a chicken coop already and it doesn't comply with what's already in here, you shouldn't have it in the first place. Because. That's kind of what we're getting at. R one A. Wanting that zoning as we stand. As far as we know, to the best of our knowledge, all those are one acre or. R one A, you're already. So you had one and you weren't one acre. We're never in compliance with city. So it's, we're not changing anything. It's just helping clarify and. Right, but well, no, 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 hold on. No, that's, that's not true. So, not true. It just said if you had ten thousand, it said anything, it, it just regulated it around ten thousand feet, but it was R one A set the. Prime, it's above that, it said R one A. There is no R one A that is less than. One acre. And then this, and then there's second and additional level of that said, anything above ten thousand feet. So it was confusing and that's why we just changed, but it did say. Yeah, so. That's, that's the thing is that the R one A was always the standard. If, if. So thi- this is, yeah. So, so right now, right now, to answer that, it's, there was, that, that wasn't in compliance anyway. So as far as managing it moving forward, um, I don't necessarily, you know, right now, this is just trying to clarify what was already on the books. Uh, they do have chickens, you know, have to address the fact that that wasn't compliant anyway. Okay, um, yeah, any more, any further discussion or questions from the board? And we'll try to, this has been a bit of a tricky one. So thanks, everybody, for, uh, bearing with us and hope you enjoy the show of trying to fumble through this. Yeah, so, right. So, um, that being said, uh, Bill twenty-five, twenty-eight is amended. So we're going to move for a roll call vote, uh, for Bill twenty-five, twenty-eight as amended. All favor? Deputy clerk, please.
Hi.
Twenty-five, twenty-eight passed. It's twenty-three, sixty-two. Okay. Have a motion to read Bill twenty-five, twenty-nine for the first time by title only. All favor? On the updated one.
It was sent out Monday afternoon.
Alright, um, here I will pass this down. Who does not have them? Who does not have the updated copy? Yeah, good. Alderman Getmeyer, do you have the updated one? So it is, it's just basically move forward with police services agreement we discussed. Uh, it's just formalizing it, allowing city members, without reading it, uh, just kind of summarizing it. This is what we discussed in the work session, but yeah. Okay. Um. Alderman Waters, do you have? Alderman Waters, do you have a copy of it? Alright, so get a motion to read Bill twenty-five, twenty-nine for the first time by title only. All favor? Attorney?
Sir, an ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri authorizing and directing the city administrator to further negotiate, execute, acknowledge, deliver and administer on behalf of the city an intergovernmental law enforcement services agreement by and between St. Charles County and the city of Darden Prairie Patrol Services and Enforcement of Certain Municipal Ordinances.
Um, so again, I know there's a lot of folks who weren't here in the work session, for those who were. Uh, this may be a second time. This is going to increase the number of police presence we have on our streets. Uh, from two, from two to four. Uh, it's going to increase the number of hours as well. If I could ask, um, city administrator, I can quick update just for the folks that are here. So they know what we're voting, so everybody knows what we're voting on.
Thank you. As you mentioned, there's been discussions, um, with the board, uh, pretty, pretty specifically uh, with request of citizens, we are looking for additional police services in our community. This will be the addition of two officers, bringing our total number of officers on the streets to four. So essentially doubling our police presence in our subdivisions.
Uh, board, any additional questions or comments, uh, related to this? Heard? Alderman Johnson, read Bill twenty-five, twenty-nine by second time for title only. Second by Alderman, uh, Getmeyer. Uh, city attorney, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, an ordinance of the city of Darden Prairie, Missouri authorizing and directing the city administrator to further negotiate, execute, acknowledge, deliver and administer on behalf of the city an intergovernmental law enforcement services agreement by and between St. Charles County and the city of Darden Prairie for patrol services and enforcement of certain municipal ordinances.
Further discussion, thoughts or comments from? Johnson move for roll call vote? Alderman Wilson, favor? Deputy clerk, please call the roll. Bill twenty-five, twenty-nine. Passed and is. Ordinance. With that, we will move to staff, officer and staff communications, city attorney.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
The engineer.
I have nothing.
Uh, city administrator.
I have nothing.
Uh, Alderman.
Yes, I have something. Um, Brian and I have actually been inundated with calls about the condos. Um, everybody's wondering about the completion date. Seems like it's taken forever to construct and there's road issues. They talk about the parking lot, so not sure. Where this might be. Everyone's familiar what I'm talking about.
Are these the condos adjacent to Kinetic Park?
Yes.
So the, the condos, um, are under very slow progress for completion. We have not issued final occupancy on the condos. They are not to be occupied. There is an occupancy on the restaurant, um, and I believe one other space that they use for seating. Uh, but no other occupancies have been issued and will not be issued. Um, I did an invest, I did a inspection today. Our city engineer is going to go out and do an inspection tomorrow. And, um, Jeff has a meeting with the developer to express to him the items that need to be completed before occupancy. Unfortunately, occupancy is our only ha- hammer, so to speak. We have no way of forcing him to plead the improvements or make the improvements. Uh, we can issue some notices of violation for the weeds and the tall grass. Um, if he's not compliant with mowing and keeping that cleaned up. Uh, we can issue notices of violation for trash around the site and things like that. Um, but, you know, forcing him to complete the construction is a challenge. So we're. Why is? So notice, notices of violation, really, um, what we typically do and on grass and weeds, there's a very specific process called out in the code on how we have to move forward with that. Um, but basically typical process is to give a first notice of violation, giving the owner a certain number of days to clean up or remedy the violation. Then you issue a second notice of violation if that's not completed. And then you move to citation, which requires them to come to court and they could be fined. And then unfortunately, what can happen is they go to court, they pay their fine, and then we start the process all over again because there isn't a real good mechanism for forcing completion of the project. No, that's not limited to Darden Prairie.
No, that, that's a, a common theme throughout all municipalities.
A landscaping plot? What do you mean? Oh, yeah, you know, they, uh, along with their final plan, they had a landscaping plan. And, um, I actually talked to the owner today. He was in my office. He frequents city hall.
When was that approved?
That would have. Yeah, it was before my time. Um, but.
I think it was.
I, I let him know that, that landscaping and sod and, and, and the, the detention areas need to be cleaned up. And that he may be getting a notice that he's not going to get occupancy until that happens. We, yeah, P and Z.
Who? Restaurant.
That was, it, it was a, Mark, it was a temporary, though, which. Um, right now, the individual that can complete the project is the one that's working on it. He owns it and, um, you know, as you know, it's a condo, so he's got forty-eight, oh, individual owners.
Right now, it, it, it's being addressed. So it, it is being addressed.
We are putting. I will cer- we'll certainly share that with them, but we, we wholeheartedly agree. And, you know, that site needs to be buttoned up and fast. Right now, occupancy permits are not going to be authorized until he's showing some progress and bringing it towards completion.
Any further? Comments from the Alderman? Heard? So that leaves it to, to me as the mayor here to close things out. Um. Sorry? No, it's, that's out of. Out of audience session right now. You have, public comments are over. If you have any additional comments, we'll be happy to discuss it after the meeting. So I will address, uh, I, I can address that after the meetings. Why, uh, having conversations with the audiences out of front for this. I haven't seen here the meeting before, so. Um, giving you some meetings here. Um, so. First of all, I, you know, we, we had a lot of folks come out here for the chicken issue and, uh, it's, I hope that we put that to rest tonight. Uh, it was a little, uh, complex in how we had to kind of navigate the waters with it. So I want to thank, thank the city attorney for helping with that. Thank the, the Alderman, especially Alderman Johnson, uh, for kind of helping identify a couple of areas of improvement in the way that that was worded. I think that was really helpful. Um, and, you know, what we'll have to address on an ad, you know, ad hoc basis as far as for folks that they currently have chickens, because again, like we kind of said several times in this meeting, not because they were allowed to in the first place, just to. Of the many. The, the different. Levels of, uh, rules around it. So I hope that, that, uh, tonight was beneficial for that, for those that did come out for that, that issue and everything. Uh, got some dad jokes over here. Um, he said, I think you got your chickens in a row for Red Herd. Alderman Johnson will be here all night, folks. I'm, I'm kidding. Um, anyway, so, uh, with that being said, uh, I hope to see you guys come out more often for those that haven't. This is, I know it's not as exciting and it's, it's probably a, a little bit challenging to understand some of the things that are going up here, but there's a lot of nuances. It's my second time up here on the dais as your new mayor and, and I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to do that. Uh, definitely got some growth to do as far as how to get through some of these readings and the nuances of it from, uh, the different position as being on the board, uh, versus, uh, sitting in this position. And I want to thank the Alderman for, for helping me, uh, kind of get on my feet as well as city clerk, city administrator and city attorney. Um, it's, uh, it's definitely a little different from up, up here as far as how the meeting goes and, uh, appreciate everybody's patience for that. Thank you guys for coming out here tonight and participating and hope to see you guys again soon. And with that, uh, I will entertain. And with that, uh, I will entertain a. Absolutely, thank you, Alderman Johnson, it is a team effort too, and as many of you may see, I'm not trying to steal the show here, uh, I think all the Alderman have a lot, lot to offer, so. It's a team effort moving forward, thank you, Alderman Johnson, thanks, everybody. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the, uh, the, the, uh, meeting. On favor? He is adjourned.